I wasn't cruising on a site though all day, it would've been colder, but it kept me warm.
I hear the syrup harvest is not particularly good this year.
Um, I've had mixed messages from people. Some guys did pretty good and some did not.
Yeah, the guy around the corner from me over in Bear Town said he wasn't doing too well.
Pete did pretty good on his.
Did he?
He's got a pretty good tree this year.
Yeah.
It's all facing slope and the whole.
Couple of my guys up, sorry.
I was gonna say it's catching it wrong, you know?
Yeah, a little bit. Couple of my guys up in Lewis County haven't had it.
Minor little green.
They're up more northern Lewis and the snow wasn't quite as deep.
Okay.
Getting around the woods it does.
Six scrappy pitches. But having snow there for moisture is helpful.
Right.
Never had coach pitch.
Just wanted to talk to Jamie Walbert, Mickey's wife.
Yeah, yeah.
She said he didn't do too well this year. They got about 25 gallons in altogether.
Okay, then everybody gets a couple times trained at that?
Yes.
Okay. Did he have trouble getting it tapped?
That might've been part of it, I don't know for sure. It's good when you add one.
Don't some people leave their lines up all year?
Well, it's, but you still gotta tap.
Above freezing. Yes, it slows way down and get stuck in the tree and then it warms up and starts forming fast.
Snowed on it.
Pete right behind me.
Yeah, he was out walking his dog when I came by.
Just remind him of our last one.
Yes.
For a couple of days. Wednesday, Wednesday.
Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Hopefully luck has nothing to do with it.
They want me in the hospital at 5:30 in the morning. It's a bit early.
So I mean, you gotta get up early.
Yeah, he's got to take me.
Long day. Where are you having it done?
Rome Hospital.
Right in Rome town?
Yeah, Dr. Ross, he's, he's one of the best ones around. Three hour operation.
She'll look late, you gotta sit up front just like a church.
I didn't hear either. Ableton said she wasn't coming, so I don't know. I didn't see her walking over.
Somebody can bring a pen, I can't, I'll keep the minutes, sorry.
I'll give her a couple of minutes.
Do you have the minutes or if you have them?
No, she's got them.
We have a core, but we've got everybody here.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't think that one's right.
That's slow.
That is after seven.
Yeah.
Did I hear footprints?
Here we go. How we doing?
If it's cold as the woods, you'd be walking faster.
I had spoken on Thursday.
Oh.
Probably should've driven.
They want physical therapy immediately.
You did? That sucks. I never had the holes in my hat. Cut you open and pull the skin parts up in. That's how my wife. Still sucks. Make sure you turn the mic on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's an issue with this.
Pardon?
There's an issue with this. It's just a base scatter.
Is it the compressor that's running or picking that up? Just review the minutes.
Yeah, I have a correction on this. Under Old Business, it was the developer who was gonna present the concept, not Scott.
Scott just, the developer called Scott, so he wanted it.
Yeah.
So it wasn't Scott that.
Do we know what the developer's name is? Or is it relevant?
Yeah, just the developers.
I do, really, I don't remember.
That'll be on the page.
Yes. Does anybody else have any changes?
And Scott was supposed to be here, the developer was supposed to be.
Developer.
I thought the developer.
Yeah, Scott works Monday nights, he'll never be here in those. Strike that thing, it says Scott didn't show up.
Will we outside any objections? Have I hear any motion to accept the minutes?
Move to accept as amended.
Second.
Call us a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So, in line with that Old Business.
The developer's here.
Yeah, no. For the Town of Lee Planning Board, Bob Coleman?
Yes.
Yeah, so he asked to come over tonight's meeting to start the dialogue between the two towns. If this project does go forward, to start the collaboration. Because it looks like right now, I guess what you call the gatehouse or the main office is gonna be located on the Town of Western.
And one of the buildings, and one of the apartment complexes as well. Or have they changed that?
The original plans that they gave us.
You can come, if you wanna step forward, you can, or sit up here, just grab a chair.
Don't be shy.
You don't get a nice chair then.
The original plans we got from two months ago, probably similar to what you've seen, are quite old. And when we reviewed them, the buildings were all in the Town of Lee. The entrances to the parking lot would be through the Town of Western. So, obviously it would be a joint venture between both of us. We've never had an experience with that. Any of the current planning board members, we've never done a joint approval with another town. And we were wondering if you guys had ever done anything like that?
No.
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 So the one thing we have done is our chairman has drafted a letter to the county planning board, asking them for guidance in this particular situation. We do know, at least the last time CRM left our meetings, they were looking to get approval from the county health department on their septic tank. So, they were not at our last meeting either. So we don't have any idea how that's going forward, but.
Okay, I suspect the plans that they submitted to you are revised because somewhere I had a copy that showed up almost a year ago that Scott had. And they had the office building, community center, whatever it was, and one of the apartment units was actually located on our side of the lawn.
Okay.
And then the remainder on the other side, so I don't know if that's changed or whatever.
We would have to re, we've asked them to come back with a new, a revised set of plans. Now, the one thing we have asked and got confirmation on, these units will be rental units only, they will not be for sale to private individuals. And we'll go through our standard subdivision procedure for their approval. But one of our concerns is timing, to make sure that we don't hold anybody up. Because they're gonna have to come to you along with us in the process of public meetings and, you know, we don't wanna overlap, we don't wanna tie them up any longer than we have to unless there's issues. So really, the biggest question was if anybody had ever done this before in the town.
They don't have any experience with the joint stuff.
No.
Now, in the Town of Lee, is this, is this a special permit use or is this requiring a variance or what?
Right now, we're treating it as a minor subdivision.
Okay.
So.
But that's authorized in that, in that particular zone?
In that particular zone, it's authorized. So they shouldn't need any special permits. The biggest thing was, is everything's on a septic system. And we have to get, or they have to get approval from the county health department before they even go forward. I know they've contacted the city of Rome because of the water main. And, which runs down Elmer Road, so they'll have to get permission to tap into that. I mean, we'll all have plenty of questions going forward on what their intentions are and who's gonna do what, so.
Are other houses in the Town of Lee tapped into that city of Rome main on that road?
Yes, yes. Pretty much anyone from Elmer Hill Road up through the Delta Terraces are all tapped into the city water system, so. And on the other side of the road also.
So are you guys gonna be the lead agency for the seeker?
Well, that's what we're asking the county. I don't have a copy of the letter, as soon as I get a copy of it, I'll send it over to you, Pete.
Okay.
And that way you're on board with what we're trying to, you know, keep everybody together on this project, so. Especially when we get a response from them, we'll make sure you guys have copies of everything.
Usually whoever's the approving agency gets twanged as the lead agency for that too. We just finished one for a solar farm, so.
Okay.
Yeah, because under our zoning, that's gonna be a special use.
It'll be a special use permit there for us.
We do know, of course, because of the combination of being next to the city of Rome and Town of Western, this all has to go to the county for approval also.
Yep, 239 on that.
We just wanna make sure when we start this off that we're on, all on the same page basically, that's all.
Yeah.
So we have, there's only more than 62 days. Once the application reaches their.
Well, we would be the first ones to get the application. We would immediately refer it to the planning board. Because they have to be, the planning board, at least Town of Western, the planning board automatically becomes our lead agency.
Okay.
And it may be that you guys wanna do a co-lead, or you guys just wanna take lead, we'd just be a, you know, an involved agency.
Okay.
You know, anyway, but once it gets out of the planning board, then the ZBA would take it up and go through the special use thing. But we have to have the seeker done before any of us can do anything, so.
Yes.
Can you table that action so the clock doesn't keep going, or how does that?
It wouldn't start until the seeker is completed, until the 239 M is completed anyway. We, you know, the law says we can't do anything until those two things are done.
Right.
So we don't even take it up for action until those two things are completed. They have to be done before we even look at it.
Currently, we have a 45 day waiting period for approval, or a window of approval in our system. Like you, we meet once a month, first Tuesday of every month. So I don't know if your waiting period is different than ours, or. I think the stage law is 62.
I'm not sure, I don't, I don't know what it, you know, for site plan approval, I don't know, or subdivision approval, I don't know what the times are. The only thing that has a shorter one is the seeker has, you get 20 days after they've completed the application. But if they don't have everything in, it doesn't start until they get all the documents that are required for the seeker, so.
Okay.
Because ours took like three and a half months to complete.
So there, yeah, so there is no public sewer up there?
No.
No, it would be a septic system.
Full septic system.
Yeah.
How many, how many buildings are only gonna be built?
Going from memory, there, they were.
Was it 100 units?
24 units?
Just 24 units? Because the original one was bigger than that. They've been talking about, almost 100 units.
Each, yeah, each building had six.
Yeah.
Townhouses, I'll call them a townhouse for lack of a better term. And I, I thought it was four or six buildings that we're gonna build.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I don't know if they're gonna try and do them all at once or do them in stages. Because we have to go through, like they're gonna have a cul-de-sac or turnaround at the ends. You know, we need to comply with the fire department and everything so that the trucks can get in and out. But they haven't presented anything else to us.
Okay.
So, and all the plans we have are actually quite old. Some of them are 10 or 15 years old.
Wow.
Yeah, I think ours are, I think we got it what, last year sometime?
Yeah, but what's dated from the drawing is October of 2019.
Yeah, some of them were 2018, 19. I sent you over the preliminary one, Pete, just to give you an idea of what we were talking about, or what they were talking.
They've actually got 12 buildings. 12 apartment buildings plus the office clubhouse. And it looks like each building has four garages. So whether or not those are two stalls, single stall, it doesn't go into that much detail.
Yeah.
According to, if, like I, there's, if this plan is what they're going with, building one and two would be in the Town of Western with the clubhouse.
Okay.
And then the other buildings are in the Town of Lee. The leach fields are on the sides of the buildings, so they're on both the north and south side.
Yep.
Yeah, that's probably gonna be their biggest thing is trying to, but that's gravel over there, right Paul?
Yeah, that drains, like there's no tomorrow. In fact, that's probably more of a problem than if they had, you know, a little bit, a little bit less percolation on the thing. Plus, because it's an apartment complex, the DEC gets in on it, and that's just the county health department.
Yep. I don't believe it's in a wetland, I think it's far enough away from any.
No, but they'll be, they'll be concerned because you've got multiple units with multiple septic systems, so they're gonna get involved regardless of wetland or not. At least they used to. In my, in my previous work doing septic systems, anything with more than four units automatically got their attention.
Right. David, the gentleman that came to our meeting, I don't recall his name, talked about one large septic tank for each of the buildings. Which, if sized properly, obviously would be acceptable. But again, we told him he had to go to the county health department and get that.
Oh yeah, they would.
Basically, the design approved before we could go forward with anything else on our end.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't even, they don't, all they say is propose a leach field, they don't mention anything about a septic or.
And these apartments just gonna be for rent?
I'm sorry?
They're just gonna be for rent, the rentals?
Yes, we did ask him that question and he came back to us with an email stating that they're strictly rentals, they're not going to be sold individually. And I think they're a combination of one and two bedroom townhouses, each with a garage. Some of them are two stories, some of them are single story, so.
So I'm guessing kinda like what they have on Merrif Road?
I believe so. But again, the plans are so old.
Right.
We've asked them, we need a completely new set of plans with, you know, current designs and.
Is this the same company that did Merrif?
Merrif was Bock.
Yeah, this is CRM, and I believe they've already been here to see you.
No, no, no.
Oh.
They came, well, we heard about it two, well Scott mentioned it a couple of years ago.
Scott mentioned it to us.
Okay.
We thought they were gonna be here last week to talk about it, but they, or last month, right?
Yeah, they asked to be on the agenda, but they.
Well, it's good I came over then. What I can do is I can, I have Pete's email, I'll send over the drawings that we had electronically so you can look at them. And we have no idea if they're gonna stick to that design or move on to something different.
Are they, is that a local entity or?
All we know is that CRM Realty is handling, is representing the owner. The way he described it to us, I guess there was multiple owners on that property years ago that wanted to develop it. And that's where these original plans came from. And one of the owners bought the other partners out and wants to move forward with this, and of course, Trivani coming in town. There's probably going to be a need for more rental property.
What's the current use?
I'm sorry?
What's the current use?
It's a field, farmer's field. So it's agricultural. And then there's, there is actually a house that sits in the middle of the, what I would call the entranceway. I don't know if they're gonna take that house out, or if they're gonna use it as an office, or.
Might use it during construction, then tear it down and finish.
Yeah.
It's the one in Western, right? On Elmer Hill?
That would be in the Town of Western, because if you look at the generic maps, that strip along the edge of Elmer Hill Road right there is Town of Western.
Yeah, so that house, I thought when I looked at the map, it was a private owner, so.
Uh, yes, somebody still lives there.
And they own like a horseshoe shake almost around it, right?
That's the other challenge we will have when we go to public hearings is who owns what and who doesn't like, you know. Are they gonna put roads on either side of the house, or you're one side of the house?
Well, that's what, almost the drawing that I'm looking at, they've got that house on here, but it's shaded out. So I don't know if they're implying that they're gonna buy it and remove it once.
Yeah, they might have already made a deal on it, or maybe they have one pending based on approvals. But as long as we keep in communication with everybody, I think we'll be, you know.
So see how we're going to be renting out the properties?
Uh, yes, they plan on renting them all out. I don't know if they have people waiting for them or not, so. Since we don't have a timeline on the project, we.
Right.
We don't know where to go.
When do you guys meet?
First Tuesday of every month.
Tuesday, okay.
Yeah, so, and again, two months ago, the rep showed up. We expected him in our last meeting and he was not there. So we're assuming either they're having difficulty getting approval on a septic system, or it's just taking longer than they expected, so. Or maybe they're waiting for a survey or a drawing or.
Would they have to do poke testing or?
Oh yeah, yeah, they have to do several.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see what they're, they copied to the county and see what they come back with.
Yeah, definitely.
Did they give you their hopeful for the timeline?
They had no timeline, they came to us with the proposal to see if it was feasible. To see if they could even go forward with it. You know, would there be any resistance, would there be any rules or special permits? And we looked at it, it's no, it's basically a subdivision process. And, you know, you follow, if you follow the process, then we'll follow our process and either approve or disapprove.
Right.
So, maybe they've given up the ghosts and moved on, we don't know yet.
Maybe I'll reach out to Tug Hill and see what they suggest to about multiple.
Yeah, they have any experience with it, they got two different towns for the same project, you know?
Yeah. One of the reasons I volunteered to come over here is I know several gentlemen on the board. So it's always easier for me to come over and talk to everybody, so.
You're Diane's husband.
Yes, that's usually what people call me.
So tell me your first name.
No, my first name is.
Mr. Diane.
But what I meant to say earlier, yes, oh, they're Ghost Diane's husband. I don't have any more questions than anybody else has.
Yeah, I mean, the only difference is, I mean, with us, it's a special use permit, it's not that much more complex.
Okay.
We just make sure, we set conditions, and if they agree to the conditions, you know, they, there's no reason to deny the permit.
Right.
As long as they meet what we say they have.
Okay.
No, these aren't rental, these are.
These are rentals.
These will be rentals.
They're rentals.
Who would be responsible for the roads if that's Westernville and that inside is Lee?
That is, that's a county highway. As far as plowing the roads, that's something that the two highway departments would probably get together and.
Well, one of the things that, that would obviously be one of the things we asked them, is who's going to.
I don't know who plows that section of Elmer Hill for the county.
Town of Lee comes down to the old Delta Lake school and turns around, and the city of Rome comes up.
City of Rome goes all the way up to that part?
Turns around and goes back. So.
The past instances, since the city of Rome is driving by, the Town of Western Highway Department would ask if they would go in and plow. But because the Town of Western may do something on Town Line Road, that's technically the city, but they'll do that for them. They work.
They work, they work out these things somehow.
But the, but the Town of Lee Fire Department will be responsible for?
No.
Lake Delta.
Probably Lake Delta.
They'll be the first, yeah.
Yeah, they're kitty corners of the project.
Town of Lee would be back up, second call on that, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so it sounds like, I think a lot of it's back in their court.
Yeah.
It is, right now.
But we just gotta see how our ducks align for working together and.
Right.
That way, yeah, we get prepared in case they do come forward with more serious plans.
And actually, a good thing is, is our meetings are at two different ends of the month, so.
Yeah.
If we find something out, we can relay it to you guys ahead of time. So you have all that information before you have your meetings.
Yep.
We'll keep you in the loop on that, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks Diane's husband. Thank you Diane's husband.
I'll tell you, you mentioned that. All right, have a good night.
All right, that was out of the way. The other business, I gotta hold, Tug Hill talked to the guidance in charge of the surveys. He is two to three months out with other projects right now. So, when that comes around, there will be sliding in, have him a chance to come down and talk. You know, I told him, we already had a survey, it was done 25 years ago. So, we may be interested in doing some similar questions to see.
We can look through and see if we think anything still applies and, you know.
But they said they would also help in the distribution of it, setting up a site. That they could do a QR code or whatever, so people can just click on.
Yeah.
Technology's come a long way since.
Yes.
Yep.
May get a higher turn up rate if you can just make it simpler.
Easy online. I was looking forward to reading Chicken Scratch, trying to make head to tail.
I remember looking at the original one once, I said, oh my god. Best best way to do is multiple choice questions too. Because otherwise the answer to a lot of the questions, just don't raise my taxes, just don't raise my taxes, just don't raise my taxes.
So we're looking really realistically to fall.
Yes. Unless we feel like we just do a revamped one.
Yeah, well, I'm I'm still trying to dig through the census data. For some reason or other, the the way it's organized from the from the twenty twenty census is a bear to get through, just trying to find what I'm looking for, so.
They had so much help in that year, everybody wanted to work that year.
So, no, unfortunately, that's.
So at least the demographic and the, you know, economic and the other data, I can start to put together at least.
Yeah, other than that, that was all I had, I did not hear anything from Scott. And obviously, we did not hear anything from these developers yet, so.
Yeah.
Should we be writing letter two to the county or should their letter suffice? Asking.
Um, one once the thing is applied, as Z B A chair, I'll throw him the two thirty-nine M request. Or Scott might even do it if it comes to him first. But that would be the first thing to go to them, but, uh, I'd wait and see what they get back first. So, you know, if the county comes through and approves their their septic system operation, then we we can just take that as an approval there. But we'll have to walk through the secret with them as well.
It sounded like they're gonna send a copy to me first, I'll just see, and then maybe I can ask and then.
Yeah.
But I'm sure the county's gonna want to ask who's gonna take the lead.
Well, yeah, normally whoever's supposed to take it, like, I would, I would assume because most of the project, the majority of the project is in town of Lee. They would get tagged as lead agency and then D E C gets to say, we don't have a problem, county says, we don't have a problem, whoever else is in there says, we don't have a problem, go ahead.
Yeah, I would, judging by that drawing that I had, I would say seventy-five percent is in the town of Lee, thirty-five percent is town of Western.
So how do the taxes get separated from the town of Lee to town of Western?
The apartment building, they have the edge of it cut off on the line, but other than that, I would, that's something that, Steve is gonna have to figure out.
Usually work that out. If if the majority of the building goes to the town of Western, it'll get assessed in Western, you know, the office building will get assessed in Western, the rest of it will be town of Lee.
Yeah, it won't be, it won't be assessed as one project, it'll just be assessed as, it'll be treated as two individual. And then he can figure out, I don't know if it would be higher or not.
Yeah. They're gonna get, they're gonna get the county highway department in there because they're they're fronting on the county highway.
That was my next question.
That's, I I mean, I I thought about that, that's gonna be a significant impact on traffic with that many people coming out there.
Yeah.
Elmer Hill is already busy enough with people coming down that way and now they're gonna.
Especially without many apartments going in.
Yeah.
How many are there?
How is, how far up is it from the Delta House or the Delta Lake Firehouse?
Um.
It's not far.
Quarter of a mile.
Not at all.
Quarter of a mile, maybe tops. It was literally as you cross the, you know, the 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 Roman western line, it goes right off there, so.
Is that where Shumaleski had all that heavy equipment parked?
It's kinda just north of that.
Just north of that.
Yeah.
How many apartments did they say?
There's twelve buildings.
Yeah.
Twelve buildings, they have four in each building, it'd be forty-eight units, but the one, the plan that I looked at, they had twice that many.
It was like a hundred.
So they, yeah, they were like a hundred in the first plan that came through, they may have decided that there's no way they were gonna give an approval on that.
They just put building one, building two, they don't put.
How many stories are the buildings?
Two, most of them, at least the original ones were all two story.
Yeah, it doesn't even say that in the, it's just.
That's a congested.
Yeah.
Isn't that a two lane road coming out of there?
It's gonna affect that intersection south of there, deep town.
Oh, and what, you mean with forty-six?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because they might be all headed to the base.
Yeah, exactly.
It's that way out when you drive in at seven, seven thirty A M.
Yeah.
That that whole area is like. A mess.
I'm surprised they haven't taken, you know, McDonald's and entrances and stuff away and just, because that's what is the worst is when somebody's trying to cut, coming north and trying to cut across.
Off of off of Black River, yeah, I don't know.
Oh, I was.
Can't believe they haven't closed that off at all.
No, I was saying over Potter, where Potter comes in.
Where Potter comes in.
There's eight or ten cars every morning when I come on past Fish Hatch, right, I'm just like, how's there not been an accident already?
That's what we need is a light there.
Tie in on.
Put around about.
The western side too, or where are they gonna?
They have to tie, the the only place they have access is on the western side of the road.
Yeah, that's where they started.
Oh, the other ones. All all the stuff along the, along the east west portion of Elmer Hill is all privately owned, no?
Okay.
Yeah, the they have a drive-in, the buildings will be on either side evenly spaced. Six on one side, six on the other side, and then at the end, there's a turnaround and.
So you're gonna have traffic coming out with someone's house in the lake.
Yeah.
And all those Amazon trucks. And the Ford U P S guy trying to get a. Yeah.
They'll probably, they'll have, they'll make them make a dedicated turning lane probably too, so then there's three lanes coming in, or not coming in, but three lanes in the the beginning.
Yeah.
Because most people are gonna be heading south.
This is gonna be a slow process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How long does it take to get building permits around here?
Well, the, their biggest is gonna be, they gotta get.
Once they get the, once they get approval, it's a month maybe, they gotta work. But they've gotta have fully developed plans and stuff before the codes officers will ever give them their permit.
Yeah, they their first thing, they have to get water, they're okay to tap into it. I mean, the main is right there, so there should be plenty of water and then their septic, because that's a lot, a concentrated septic unit.
Yep.
Without having.
That many units, yeah.
Because I don't even know where the sewage actually starts in that side of town.
There isn't any anywhere around there at all, the entire like.
Does it hit Potter before it gets to Potter? Or it doesn't even come up that far?
I don't think it even comes up that far.
I'm assuming not, Ridge Mills has to be on it.
It'd have to be commercial.
Yeah, the school is, but but they're they're well beyond that intersection.
Right.
They'd have to do commercial sewage there too, wouldn't they?
I wonder what Lake Delta School must have done on the septic.
Had to be, I was just thinking the same thing. Oh, yeah, yeah, still is, you know, they rent, they rent the place out. Yeah, Lake Delta is, Stokes is.
Oh, anything about that?
That's why the grass grows so well over there.
That's where their cemetery is green.
Yeah.
No, and I, as far, I've had no other correspondence, so.
Yeah.
Um, with that, I've got no.
Once Travani starts, we're gonna start seat changes.
Yeah.
Like, oh, he started, haven't they?
Hmm?
Haven't they started already?
I don't know if they broke the ground or not, no.
They did the shovel ceremony, but they have to wait for the permitting.
Right.
They're hoping to start in July.
Yeah, when they went to Rome planning, they were three weeks behind schedule at least, so. They were, I think they just approved like the zoning amendment and a couple other little things and that's all they've done so far.
Where are they building now?
Where the golf course was. Basically.
In what they call the triangle.
Mm-hmm.
That's basically where the old, you have old original runways were.
Is that where the camping was or what's that?
No.
Um, might have been some of them.
Yeah, maybe some, maybe like a little skirt.
Yeah.
I think where the porta potties were, I think.
That's where everyone tried to sneak in from.
Yeah.
Yeah, we we went in from Penny Street, that's a long walk.
Just walk right through the gate.
So, I don't know if anybody has anything else. Are you in motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
See you in two months.
Good luck, John.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear no if when you have solar panels installed on your house, if town hasn't become unexpected. I know the issue will come in.
Scott might.
Scott might, I'll contact Scott. Because mine all came off the roof last winter. Twenty of them. I went by the other day and said, oh, they got.
They were all rails off too, I said.
My God, I was laying in bed because I was sick that day, I thought a plane landed on my house. So I'm trying to figure out if they were installed properly. Well, with that kind, with that kind of load on its heart, you know, they're not, they're not designed for that kind of load. Damn, I asked the family company too, I said, should I be getting the snow off those baskets? And they'll let nature take its course. Three days later, nature took its course. Nature not only took its course, it took the panels with it. Took the panels with it, luckily none of my dogs are out at the time.
Our neighbors, our neighbors.
Fought back.
Our neighbors came off too.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
So you didn't do any ones?
No, you weren't the only ones.
Yeah.
We're twenty.
Oh, really?
Alrighty.
How's how's Carter doing?
Carter and I have it within five days.
Oh, really?
Yeah, three dogs now, I'm down to one.
Casey's, Casey's gone to the jury pretty quickly too. She got she got some type of nasal infection.
Percentage is. And again, you get a very.
But nowhere near what she used to, so she's. I can't get the antibiotics into her because she vomits it back up again. Probably may not be there Friday night so far.
I was surprised, I was surprised to see.
Friday?
One of the ways.
I'm not, I'm not even sure we're gonna, I'm not even sure we're gonna meet because it's. Okay, yeah.
I was wondering about that, but it's good to know.
Wearing your coats?
Yeah. This is not snowing.
I'll just.
I I will let you know that a day or so, if we want to try to meet Tuesday, if everybody can or not, we can send out a question. No, we don't have it at all. Then I know. I don't see any point, I don't see any point trying to meet, so.
I'm gonna get a copy in a bit from my experience.
Do you happen with you? Yeah, I'll post those on the website. I'll post those on the website.
Okay, you don't have it with you, so, oh, it rains.
I have.
Well, it rains.
Today or?
Huh?
Today?
Well, I I send them out, I save them from a draft.
What what I'm saying is, New York State law requires that you immediately upon someone requesting minutes from a board meeting, like a planning board meeting, within two weeks of the tight date of the meeting.
Well, that would be, no.
The meeting was April seventeenth, and so that means within two weeks, those minutes should be available, so.
Talk to the.
So, uh, I need to get those from you.
My position.
Uh, okay, good, it's, so you're not, you're refusing that?
No, I'm not.
You're not refusing it, so you're not giving it to us?
I have a process that I'm following.
Process, but whatever process you have is not New York State law, so New York State law says you need those to have, need need to get those of people as soon as they request them after two weeks. Now, if you don't have that, you're not following New York State law, that is not a good thing.
Well, you've just now requested them, so I have two weeks.
Okay, Carol, you got that?
Oh, let's go home and keep warm.
We have four folks tonight, Carl, online, that's awesome, that is great. For a planning board meeting, that's phenomenal. And many of them, hopefully, were from Lee because it it impacts them as well and, uh.
Yeah, it's gonna start being interesting now with the two inch twined.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's like they, they don't have any experience with it, neither do we.
But Tug Hill's seen that before, Carl, right? I mean, there's, there's a good chance Tug Hill.
Tug Hill's probably seen it, they'll they'll have an idea of how it was handled and give us some advice.
Right.
That's done, that's done. That was the speaking.
Oh, yeah.
This real quick here. We're just. That the, uh, the New York State Open Meetings law requires that, uh, within two weeks of a meeting, if there is anyone that requests meeting minutes, uh, those requests are to be fulfilled immediately. In other words, you don't have to go through a foil, you don't have to go through any process whatsoever in order from the secretary of that board. So tonight, of course, we asked the Planning Board Secretary if we could get a copy of the April seventeenth minutes, which, uh, basically was thirty days ago. And she refused, uh, to give that to a stating she would place those online. Now, I would be okay, uh, with that secretary placing those online if they were made available this evening, let's say. Uh, but the chairman of the Planning Board, Pete Donahue, when she said, well, it's really not my position, it's not my job, I I have a process I follow. Pete Donahue gave her the wink, and you'll see that on the the camera, that you did a good job in preventing the public from gaining access to those meeting minutes that they're allowed to see within two weeks after that meeting. And of course, we've been a good, um, uh, thirty days or so at this point uh, without those minutes available to the public in the town of Western. So, uh, it'll be interesting to see if she posts those tonight or if she still refuses to follow New York State law as dictated by the Open Meetings law in New York State. So I'm Don Peavy, folks are discussing that over there as you can see. And, uh, uh, they're they're kinda red hot, uh, because they don't like the fact that we know the law and they don't. Uh, and that's just driving them freaking crazy. And it's too bad that we have to get to this point, uh, where we have to push those kinds of buttons, but we are the public, we are the taxpaying public. Uh, and we have a right to the kinds of information, uh, that they're withholding from us like this. So, uh, again, Town of Western Civic Civic Affairs, I'm Don, Carol's with me. We've recorded this meeting for you folks, uh, it should be, uh, live and of course, we'll do an updated, uh, 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 copy of that with some annotated notes as well, uh, if we have some time to take care of that. This was a great meeting, uh, showing the Town of Lee Chairman, I believe, of the Planning Board there, uh, basically just blowing past any questions from the public, uh, outside the hall with respect to what his name was. And he felt it just was beneath him to answer those questions. So, uh, I don't know what's going on with the Town of Lee Planning Board Chairman and why he doesn't wanna talk to the public in the town of Western. I suppose he doesn't have to, uh, he's here to meet with the Planning Board. Uh, but, uh, as a simple courtesy, uh, my name is, uh, and that would have been, that would have been it, and that would suffice it. That would have been the end of the story, but he likes, uh, for some reason to go somewhere else, I don't know why. Uh, but he refused to answer that question, that's too bad. So, Don Peavy, Carol Melton, we're finished here at the Town Hall for now. And we'll be back with you later on. This is Town of Western Civic Affairs, I'm Don Peavy, we're here for you.